It's a great opportunity to be with you again, once more on this medium. All News Nigeria, it's not east-west-south, that is news for you, all news. Alright, diverse views powered by All News Nigeria. Today we'll be talking about the absence of Bola Ahmed Tinubu as the presidential flag biara of the All Progressive Congress, the last presidential debates organized by Arise TV. Also, Artikul was absent and who was absent? And Nigerians are really talking about their absence from the town hall meeting. Alright, we shall be looking at the implication, the reactions of Nigerians towards this. Let's quickly join our reviewers, they are presently here, I'll be right back. It's a brand-new week, a brand-new Monday, and it's diverse views on All News Nigeria. I have here with me very, very great intellectuals at the newsstand today. Fermy, Fermy what?
Adewole Fermy.
Adewole Fermy and Adekunle, Adekunle what's that?
Akintunde.
Adekunle Akintunde. Behind the camera, we were arguing something very important, which Nigerians have also, you know, expressed their displeasure over. And it's just worrisome at this point in time that we as Nigerians could be experiencing such from these political big weeks. Artikul Tinubu absent from the town hall meeting organized by Arise Television. Now, this has, you know, been coming up, not just today, especially on the aspect of Ashwad Bola Ahmed Tinubu. Whenever he's been told or he's been invited for a debate or for a talk, at the end of the day, you won't see Ashwad Bola Ahmed Tinubu there. The only person you will see is his running mate, who happens to be Shetima. Now, Fermy, do you think this is what we need? Mr. Akintunde, is this, is that the right thing to do at this point in time? When Nigerians need good quality leaders that could take us to the promised land.
Okay, thank you very much. You see, well, all I see about this town hall meeting, town hall meeting, it does not translate into good leadership, right? You don't, you work less, you talk less, you work more. You know, when the leader is telling you he's busy for all this town hall talk, and I would tell you, majority of the organizers of this town hall, they are partisan people. This one is being organized by Arise. You should definitely know that Arise wasn't in a good tune with Lagos state. Right from the Fashallah time, the Lagos state has to, I mean, take over his site in Lucky, I mean, I think that site wasn't even, it was leased. So they told him, "Take your, if you are here to be castigating, you know, embarrassing us every time, take your Arise, what's it called, award to Abuja", if you could remember well, because I'm a child of history. So there is not, there have never been good times, good times with Obina, what's it called? Obianah, you know, the owner of Arise TV. So, and the way people are looking at that guy that is being partisan, it belongs to a party definitely. The other time, it belongs to PDP. Right now, I don't know where it belongs.
Ruben Abate?
Yeah, with Ruben, with Ruben, you can see the body language. So, I don't just put blame game on people that because he did not come, he has to, there may be internal, you know, issue that is on ground that we don't see, in which I may be privileged, even though that the old Nduka Obi Obena is not in good time with Lagos state government generally. Since the council, Arise, what's it called, award, he always organize in Lagos.
But that shouldn't be, that shouldn't be.
It should, it should.
It shouldn't be a major issue. Obi, Obi, Obi has been, you know, up and doing in terms of attending.
Yes, yes, attended, my brother, my brother. Talk is cheap, mind you, talk is cheap. Do you get what I'm saying? Talk is very, very cheap. I can come here now on a platform, I'll do this, I'll do that. But if I know I'm confident on what is, and likewise, the other time he sent his wife, Shetima, to go, and you know, it's a team.
That's to represent.
Yes, it's a team, I mean, what's it called?
But Nigerians want to hear from the president.
And you've been hearing and you've been seeing the good work on ground. Let me just say it to her.
Where is the good work?
Where is the good work? What's it called? Sorry, yeah, yeah, the name, I'm forgetting your name.
Which name?
Your own name.
Michael, Michael.
Sorry, Michael. Were you in Lagos when Marwa was ruling? That's the last solar disway, Boba Marwa. Were you in Lagos there? Do you know how Lagos was there? I think I was a bit privileged during that Nadeko time, during that Abacha bus go, we could see how Lagos was. Were you in Lagos when Ola Guseyounila was ruling? Were you in Lagos? Do you know how Lagos were?
So, you're telling us that Tinubu brought transformation to Lagos?
The transformation was started, the transformation started.
Not for Lagos, not for Lagos?
No, 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 let me learn, let me learn. This transformation started from General Bobolaji Johnson, who happens to be the first indigenous Lagosian to govern Lagos after the colonies, right?
If you're talking about the transformation.
It started, there was, you see, mind you, the white people, they left a master plan for indigenous leadership, indigenous negotiation that will come and brought, right? I was, and I, I can tell you that categorically for free. You know, and I've seen the part of the master plan, they left them because I was part and parcel of see, a person that can say, I know in and out of the highbrow Lagos, that the colonies, the colonial masters.
What of Jakondi?
I'm calming down, I'm calming down, I'm calming down. I said somebody sets the master plan. It was same master plan, Jakondi follow. Then it was same master plan, Tinubu is following, and he's heading up his own. And when they talk about tax, tax revenue, right, for Lagos, his company, eh, his company now, as I'm talking to you, has like 16 states of the federation, they are remitting tax for. They are remitting tax for.
These things you just mentioned, shouldn't be a yastic for him not to attend this debate.
I say, I can decide not to go for a debate or not. Biden can decide not to go for a debate that is being organized by Democrat, I mean, Republican, Republican, yes, by opposition.
This is a media thing.
Media now, as you say, are partisan, what are you saying? If you want to tell me AIT is not partisan? You want to tell me that on the last election, the owner of AIT came out with a defamation, character assassination, I mean, say, that they were playing all round.
That wouldn't be the first time.
And that got to the court, no, 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 that got to a court case in which the person Haya Ezekume and Tinubu Haya Olani Peckun. What ended up the case? No, 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 let me learn, let me learn. Haya Olani Peckun.
Are you a member of the APC?
I'm not a party member, I'm a card carrying member of APC, but I is, you know, I mean, is true supporter of Ashwad Bola Tinubu, no matter what anybody say. I love the guy, he has his shot coming, everybody has a shot coming in life. And why I'm doing this is, these same people, these same Carlos people is gonna die. His hand is shaking, his hand is, how would they say? Just etas of humanity. You kill, you kill the ensas people, you kill the ensas, you kill, I mean, youths at the ensas. I say, look at the myopic thinking of all these youths we have. And I don't want to belong to all these trending, I mean, they wasted, the generation that is trying to be, a wasted generation.
Wasted generation?
Yeah, they are half-baked, half-baked. I have, I, no, 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 yes, it's a wasted generation as we talking now. I'm telling you, oh, ha, and I repeat it, and I hold nobody apology. Because how old are you now? You are in your 30s, 30s. How old was Baba, what's it called? How old was our guy in Joss? The other guy, the former president?
Go One.
Go One, man, how old was he when he was ruling? How old was Babangida?
Even Moritala?
Moritala, how old were they? How old were they? Partu told me, he was the special assistant to Shagari on industries or, you know, industrial issues. How old was Partu told me? When he was handed over that, he thought he told me he was 27 years old. 27 years old. Now, look at, look at this, look at this generation now. Did they create space for us?
I don't think Lucky will succumb to what you say.
I have succumb.
No, no, no.
I don't think he will. We are trending towards it.
My, my point of view is this. Now, all meeting is like a market. Where they who are invited to come and market your goods. But when you refuse to go there, it's your own cup of tea, it is you that you are doing yourself. When you invite you to, you are a politician and they invite you to come and display what you have for us. But you refuse to go, I don't know what you are thinking about. But me personally, I don't really buy the idea of today, town hall meeting, tomorrow. There will be campaign. But Nigerians want to hear them speak.
Hey, let me tell, I'm coming. Today, tomorrow, town hall, tomorrow. Do you know how many town hall meeting I listened to in 2015? I listened to Chris Ngike when he was doing town hall meeting in Anambra, and nearly 7 years, oh, these people, they are going to perform, oh my god, oh! Look at this, see what he has there. If you, he listened to Osibadjo, when Osibadjo is talking, when Osuomale, Adams, Osuomale is talking, you will, oh, these people, hmm, they are vibrant, look at, here we are. So I don't really believe, I don't, I don't buy the idea of tomorrow, town hall meeting, come and tell us what you want to do. If you come, there will be campaign. No politician will come out and say, if I enter, I will be killing people. Oh, you people, you'll be hungry, oh. Nobody will thought that, all of them, they will come out and they will come out and they will tell us what they have, what they want to do, positive things, not negative. But when they get there, some of them, they do something contrary to what they come and promise us here. So, this one, I'm, it's not because I'm supporting Tinubu. If I have my PPC, I have my PPC, I will vote for him. Why? If the situation will not change, I know that Tinubu is going up here to go and break the power at the top. That power at the top is too much, and he does mention it of recent. We need through.
On that same platform?
That's what I'm saying, that is only, is the only person that I can see now, that he has that spirit of going to that place, he have the spirit of true federalism. I think it's only Tinubu that I can see now, that he will go there, he break, that power is too much to hope. Why, why, why?
Inside, it's only Tinubu that can go there and break that power.
Why Tinubu will do it? Why Tinubu will do it? Why, let me talk, come and do your whole. Why Tinubu will, maybe, why I have the trend that Tinubu may be able to do it again? You know Lagos state is, is Tinubu pace? If Tinubu go up there and go and break some power that is too much here, the power will come that to state. And when Tinubu come, he will be able to rest in Lagos state, he will have some power. If Lagos state has some power, you know where we be now? You know, it's all this, what all these things that we are fighting about, that we are fighting for? Eh, tax?
Remind me, tax?
No, it's not, it's not tax, it's not tax.
Is it Infinity?
Eh, all these facts and things, Tinubu will go up there, I know that we may probably have local police. If the same spirit that has been swallowing all of them, we not swallow him again there. But it's only person that I can see now that if he go there, he has.
You know Artikul, who have done it before?
I'm not here to argue about Tinubu or Obi, I'm telling you what I've seen. And I'm not going here to call anybody a generation of warfare, we have right to choose.
But Kule just said, it's a wasted generation.
I don't buy that idea, that's not, that's, I don't, even, I don't, I don't like an autocratic somebody that they will not be able to criticize him. Why I'm afraid Tinubu, this, this style of Tinubu not attending town hall meeting is that it may be sign of being pompous, being too pompous sometimes.
He has done it several times, and the likes of Obi.
Because, and we need, we need a listening president, a president that we call, I know now that Tinubu is politically pompous, he be pompous.
Politically pompous.
Politically, he's been, he's been pompous, he had that pomposity. But the pomposity is not enough reason for me to throw him away. I cannot throw out a bat water with the baby. So that's my issue with Tinubu, I know that we may have, Badi also has it. When we were doing ensas, Stangwolu was crying, Baba was laughing. Anything happened for Nigeria, now too thick Baba go take.
And this is the kind of leaders we still need in year 2023.
Again, why, you see, when you are in war, because I see Nigeria as in war now. If anything goes, as Nigeria case it is now.
Because so far so good, Artikul has been attending.
Where, 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 where? At least. Artikul, Artikul has been attending, attending is not enough. I cannot vote for another full and nimman to come and rule me for the next 80 years. I, that one is not possible.
But if we are not voting for a full and nimman, I think the Yoruba man should come outside and address his people.
If, when he sent to address you, he will be really early now, when Tinubu attend. Now, when they are barely, and Tinubu refuse to mount the podium, then I will know that they are CISO. You know what they talk about now? That all these men, they know what they do now. The by APC take over from PDP in 2015, they use media. They know the power of media. So if Tinubu go there, they will just scatter everything. That's truth of the matter, that's Arise. There is one guy in that Arise TV, if you see where he mess, this one, governor of Ogo State.
Rufai?
Eh, that Rufai, if you see where he met, I still repeat that video. Ogo State governor was, meh, 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 meh. So if you are not well prepared and you have a lot of secrets and nobody that has no secrets. Me too, I have my own secret.
Definitely, Tinubu has been avoiding all this.
Why would he? Yo, Ruba, yo, Ruba, we say.
Does he, he has cockroaches in his cock box?
No, no, doesn't have, it's Artikul doesn't have, it's Obi. They're not, they're not the people they are looking for in United States.
Artikul has, but he has been attending.
I don't know how many he has been attending, no. And I don't know how many of them. Everybody, let me tell you, it's not a yastic that somebody don't attend whatever. I've told you that even Osibadjo did more than this in 2015. So Nigeria, now which Nigeria now? A media house that home by somebody, controlled by somebody. You say, you say, you see on Netia that they are organizing.
Has he ever attended Canas, Canas interview?
Canas interview, who want Canas?
We are talking, we are talking about Arise TV.
Who want Canas? Who want Canas? Who want Canas?
Mama, John Mama.
John Mama, John Mama can belong to any, let's enter here, organize. If Tinubu don't go there, then I know that there's problem. Ah, towards the election, there will be a major one that they will organize that if Tinubu have confidence. Yes, now, if we attend, wait.
He will not come.
Why are you curious? Why all this curiosity?
Okay, okay. This campaign council, this spokesperson have put up statement, why Tinubu did not attend. And for me, the statement is a flimsy excuse. Because Kayamu was quoted to have said that they understand that during this campaign period, that many media houses will organize similar town hall meeting. And that as a president, that is for all, that I don't want to start choosing and picking which town hall meeting to attend and could not attend, and coupled with the fact that he is having a serious shared, tight shared because of the campaign. For that reason, that he's not likely going to attend any town hall meeting by any media. For me, it's a flimsy excuse. Because whether I like it or not, I heard Kule talking about they have, the people should go and look into their manifesto. But not whether these politicians, they will hire experts to write the manifesto. But if you come to town hall meeting, it is a forum where you are not in control. You'll be subjected to scrutiny. You will be made to answer question, it to afford Nigerians an opportunity to do appraisal of your competence, of your capability.
And interpret your manifestos.
Yes, of course, because you'll be asked question directly on your manifesto. Just like yesterday, I watched Shoree on China TV. I didn't know he's that brilliant, I didn't know he's that broad-minded. So, even though that he have very several, that opportunity of coming to the media to speak, I don't know that this man is this experienced. So that trying to say nonsense is, shelling away from the media, shelling away from town hall meeting is a war of trying to hide their incompetence. Trying to hide so that Nigerians cannot subject them. Because they know that the more they come, the more they expose their incompetence. For me, I will say, if there is a town hall meeting organized by, because I heard Kule talking about Arise TV that is partisan, I don't know how he come to that conclusion. Because like I said, like I said, I said going by the media council of APC, they are spokesperson. The reason they gave, the reason they gave is as very as what Kule is saying. The reason they gave, they say they are not attending anyone.
If Obi was invited.
They can never even invite Obi in TV. So I wonder why, so, Obi Obena, they invite Tinubu for town hall meeting.
The, Arise is saying, the Arise is saying, it is not known to anybody that Nduka Obena is talking about belongs to any political party.
These guys are partisan, so I can't believe in this.
If he's talking about, because from what, from what Kayamu said, if the channel organize, they are not coming, Tinubu is not coming.
Sure, they not come.
And that is as very as what he's saying.
He may not come, because he not home.
So, what I'm saying is, they are deliberately shelling away from media because they know they will debauched themselves when they come to the media.
As a practical, you see, talk is cheap, walk the talk, let people see what you have done, what you have achieved. Not if I come to town hall meeting, town, you see town hall meeting is a.
No, you know, Kule is too partisan, that is the problem, that is the problem. I am not partisan.
You are a saint.
You see what?
No, I am a saint.
I'm not, I'm not partisan. What I, I don't have alliance with anybody. I told you, I said, I listened to Shoree yesterday.
You have a party that you have.
I said, I listened to Shoree yesterday, I was surprised. I was, you don't know me, I'm not like you don't know me.
I think, I think we should be fair enough to say the truth.
I think what I'm saying is, I said like yesterday, I listened to, I listened to Shoree, I was surprised.
He has the business, eh, business that I'm meeting.
I'll let me tell you this, Mr. Mike, look at, if you say as a party, you organizing town hall meeting. Nobody is against that. But the issue is, if you're gonna town hall meeting by yourself, you are in control of the process. That will not afford Nigerians opportunity of doing appraisal to know what, because if you come to a town hall meeting organized by a media house, you are not in charge of the process, you'll be subject to scrutiny, to question based on your manifesto. You answer question, I don't know, I don't know what.
They are charging individual.
You want to run the country.
As a individual person, it's what they.
You want to run the country.
They don't even want to.
And you claim to have the capacity, the ability.
And that guy will shame them any moment from now.
It means you have the ability to.
This one, this slave that he doesn't know that.
That when you, when you are called upon to defend what you want, the job you are looking for to, you should be happy and ready to come and defend it. Because whether I like it or not, it's not about.
The manifesto is there. He should be able to interpret it.
What I'm saying is, let me, wait, what the Kule, what the Kule do not know is?
Economic guru, banker executive.
What the Kule do not know is? Whether I would like it or not, whether I would like it or not, somebody will win. Let's assume Tinubu wins. And at the end of four years, he's not able to deliver on the job. Then, it will be, it will not be exposed that he didn't have the competence. And by then, would have done try and error. What I'm saying, I don't know who have the competence, that is why we want to, all of them to be subjected to scrutiny.
You can't tell me you don't have a president, you can't.
Get me right, Mr. Kule, I said, that is why.
Don't hide down that.
Can you listen to me? Can you listen to me?
Don't hide down that.
But can you listen to me?
Listen to me.
Can you listen to me? I'm not voting for anybody. What I'm saying is, let all of them be subjected to scrutiny so that we can make an informed decision, so that we can do an appraisal based on, you have your manifesto, you have your manifesto, each and every one of them, whether Obi, Artikul, eh, Tinubu, they can hire experts to write their manifesto. But you'll be on the spot, on the horse seat, to take question from your manifesto. Based on that, Nigerians will be informed to know your competence in relation to your manifesto.
Can I not talk of competency and dishonestness?
The competency, the competency is talking of, the competence, when you saw, talk of who is the most competent among those all three of them? Look, make sure, you mention Tinubu, why?
You have, I don't know why you are deceiving Nigeria.
Why is the most competent among them? Let me learn, let me learn. It started from the Nadeko sign, no, proud to Nadeko.
Oh, Kule, why are you deceiving Nigeria?
He was one of the first politician that was on ground, he was on ground with Yaradua. That is Sheru, Mosta Yaradua, who happens to be Artikul.
Thank you.
Political, you know, master, right? Tinubu has been in that area with them, he fought for democracy of this country.
Thank you.
Where were all those?
Kule, can you compare 30 years ago to the now?
Now?
Look at what they are doing now.
Can you compare 30 years to the?
It's about here, Dabi.
Now, yes. No, no, not everything.
Everything. Let me start from the age. The age you are looking at, it's not what we need in politics, because then you'll be.
We don't need analog present now.
Why is Biden?
We don't need analog present now, analog, digital now present, we don't need analog. We don't need people who doesn't attend debate. We don't need people who, they just will ask a question.
Calm down, calm down, man, calm down.
I have to, because you are not talking, you are not making sense. You are not making sense, Kule.
He works with example.
You are not making sense.
Sadu Aramco, that's the biggest refinery.
We don't need somebody to be local. We don't need a local.
All these local boys, they are telling me.
Okay, listen.
Somebody that is.
Okay, Kule.
A universal.
Let's take it, let's take it. Okay, very good, I want to, let me ask Kule something.
Yeah, ask me.
You said you love Nigeria. 2014, he said Tinubu deceive Nigeria, deceive Lagosians. Said Bouare is a Messiah. Said Donatan is a drunkard, Donatan is this, Donatan cannot make people to happy. But now, they brought that manifesto, you remember? They brought it, Tinubu, Bouare, all these people sat down and deceive Nigeria. And Nigeria followed.
Can I answer you?
Today, just several years now, where we now, we are zero.
Can I, can I answer?
Wait, 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 before you answer, before you answer. Economy, zero. Security, zero. Forest money, dollars now, almost 1,000 naira, zero. What can Tinubu tell us again? What is he coming to town hall meeting? So, for you to say you are not coming to address Nigeria, millions of Nigerians that want to see you, and you are not saying you don't want to, automatically disrespect, you cannot even qualify local company. Tinubu 30 years ago, it do, it different now. We don't want analog again, we need people that can be able to address people. Don't tell me any of this situation.
I don't mind, I don't live in Lagos. I don't mind.
You do Bidens, they also address the nation.
Thank you.
Tinubu address the nation.
During electoral period.
Tinubu address the nation.
Tinubu cannot address a nation, cannot be a busy people.
Were you in Lagos, were you in Lagos business?
He is talking about.
I don't need to go.
Ask me the question.
He doesn't need to go around all those debates.
You do watch a complete election? Did you watch Ashu election? Did you watch Ashu election? Tinubu was saying, labor with labor die, is it what we told you, yeah?
Lagos is digital, Lagos is digital. I'm so shocked that this man is not even, is not even aware of Lagos state economy.
Lagos state, Lagos, Lagos had the highest money, they make money. But people, the poorest people in Lagos here, you can't be able to pay for rent. Go to the major road, AKG road, they don't have road. The only use of this regular road, old road to campaign. What did it go to tell us? Hospital, houses, transportation, what is going to tell us?
Wait, my brother, I think you must have been to Ocean Interchange before. Is that a federal project? You must have been to Abu Legba, flyover, over Ede.
Constructed by?
Constructed by Lagos state government.
By who?
Under, under, under Ambody.
Ambody, it is nothing like.
Who brought Ambody?
Ambody, Ambody hit away.
Wait, wait.
Ambody is sack.
You know nothing.
Ambody is sack.
You learn, let me.
Somebody I do in way is sacking.
He said, who rejected Ambody?
Who rejected Ambody?
He will, he will, who groomed Ambody to start with?
Who rejected Ambody?
I can reject.
Who rejected Ambody?
I can reject a stubborn boy that does not want to listen to me. Yes, I made him, I made him a can and reject him. Who was Ambody?
How the question?
Ambody was a catan general of Lagos.
Don't deceive Nigeria.
Former catan general, Tinubu promoted him, say come and be the next governor of Lagos.
So, so he was stubborn.
He was stubborn.
That's why he was rejected.
He was stubborn.
Stubborn to his godfather. Kule, the problem you have.
Continuity, they said government is continuity.
The problem you have for this.
There was a master plan.
Okay.
And the master plan has to be adhered to.
He didn't follow it up.
He didn't follow it up. Imagine this Ambody you are saying to, he, 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 he had reached himself when he was in government, that was one really nothing.
Okay, Kule, now.
You don't know anything, tell me stuff.
Hold on, I didn't know anything, let me say something, I'm on the floor, I'm on the floor, Kule. Kule, I want to ask you, yesterday debate, hold on, hold on. And I enjoyed yesterday, and I listened to four of them yesterday, I listened to Abiola, Abiola son yesterday. I listened to Konkwa yesterday, and I listened to Okowa yesterday, for that debate yesterday, and I gave it to Okowa. Yes, I'll tell you why. You know, we have some panel yesterday who are monitoring the fact and check to know what I say, whether it's true or not. And I think, they tell O B that those fact are wrong fact.
They told O B that.
And, and Abiola son, nobody, nobody challenge Okowa, that challenge me that Okowa, that, the meaning that Okowa is right. But let me tell you, do you know why your brother cannot attend the debate? Or natural, or public visit, because he doesn't know how to talk. Once, he went to rally in Ashu State.
You know he's an economist.
He's a bit of a, listen to me.
You know he's an economist.
He's a bit of a, he's a bit of a dress. Kule, listen, instead of Tinubu to address the supporters, the next thing he say, labor, labor, labor die. Don't forget, he's coming to office, or he had to work in office, had a labor, everybody say labor, once you pay, they pay you salary, you are in labor. Abusive could do you that is working. Is that a president that can control father? He's not a father, a father that cannot control children, a father that cannot talk to children. Nigeria is not Lagos, Nigeria is not Africa, Nigeria is not Joss, Nigeria is not Edo. Don't forget, Tinubu get to Edo, that he want to win election, and the Edo said no, Edo not be Lagos. So, I'm telling you, Tinubu cannot start for one hour to address the nation, so that is why he wrote for the debate.
Your Edo, but your Edo not Adam hour now, I mean, your Edo not be Artikoo now. So, what I'm saying, what I'm saying about these guys, you see, one thing.
He cannot answer.
Let's give M C Grammar. One thing with, what I'm saying with these guys, eh, is, the, the, the more they become haters of humanity, because there has been grudges on ground. They hate this guy for hu, for human sake, I don't know what is going on with them, and they can't be as.
Please say the last, the last thing, see, I want to thank the ibos.
But, but, two thousand and twenty-three, but for life, continuity of progress in Lagos, we translate to continuity of Nigeria. He's only failure, he's only, he's only man that doesn't reason that we know.
I want to thank the ibos.
We want, we have to count Lagos.
I want to thank the ibos.
Kudosu, Abshwaju, Abshwaju, God bless you, I love you, I love you, I love you.
You are campaigning. Yeah, yeah, eh, Kule is bringing ethnicity, tribalism, and I don't like that. See, I want to thank the ibos, and all the indigenous in Lagos, who are be patient, who they tasses, pain tasses every day, they don't sit. So Lagos, I pray, God should bring a better leader that will make us at least worth to pay to gain it and enjoy it and live long. So Tinubu, out of your way.
Thank you.
O B, I don't think O B will be able to, O B will try, but the problem that the Kaba gave you the presidency, they have somebody in mind that will be able to protect him. That is my own, God should bring a better leader, thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Alright, good morning, good morning, good morning, I've been hearing, all they've been talking all this while, all they've been saying, but unfortunately, my view is quite different from their own view. Now, um, talking about the politics of Nigeria today, when you look at Artikoo, when you look at P T O B, and you look at Tinubu, we take them one by one. Now, first of all, let me take on Artikoo. Artikoo no doubt is somebody that, when he becomes the president, I can guarantee you one thing, there's going to be food. But he does, he doesn't have the leadership brain, that is just it about Artikoo, he doesn't, yes, he, the food is going to be in the country, but because Artikoo is not somebody who is, um, well informed, let me use that language, he's not well informed, and so definitely, I see.
Well informed governance.
Well informed governance, he's not well informed governance, he doesn't even understand much.
A former vice president?
No, he could be, he was only a besley money there. Don't forget that the problem he had with Obasanjo, unfortunately, nobody seems to talk about it. The reason why Obasanjo cannot forgive Artikoo is because, Obasanjo gave Artikoo some money in an aeroplane to take down to U S. Artikoo diverted the money to Dubai, and when Artikoo came back, Obasanjo asked him about the money, he said, sir, did you give me any money? So that, Obasanjo developed a hatred for him, so that is where the hatred for Artikoo started. So what I'm trying to say is that, while, and another second reason is, Obasanjo felt while he was there in office working, Artikoo was just there making money. So definitely, I don't see Artikoo as a vice, he did not act as a vice, but rather he was there making money. So, let's just seal it up like that, because even then, as Obasanjo, I don't see anything, Artikoo did not function well as a vice, you understand? So unlike Oshibanjio, Oshibanjio Bouharé, you will notice that Oshibanjio was trying to function, but Bouharé did not allow him. So definitely, Nigerians know all these things, but we all keep silent. So what I'm, I'm trying to say is that, you see, that of Artikoo, Artikoo did not really function well, but now he's coming as a president, fine. I want to say is, his government is going to be fine, okay, we could have food and other things, but he's not well informed. Now, we talk about something like Tinubu, Tinubu is the worst among them, number one, I'd ask people, what is he getting coming? Each time I see people talk about Tinubu is brilliant, I get annoyed. Tinubu is not a brilliant soul, if you put Tinubu and me together, I would tell him, you are not brilliant. The only thing you just do is, then you will opportunity to follow Awolob, but you know, you do not follow Awolob brilliantly. There are things that Tinubu is supposed to do that he's not doing. And unfortunately, now, it is not you putting somebody in power because of your political reason, that's what we're talking about. Or how many people can come out today in Nigeria and tell me that Tinubu made him what he is, gave him money to establish himself, nobody. So, the only person we can talk about is, he made me to, you are mad. Why would they not make Fajula become a governor? Because, will you become a governor second time again? No, it's not possible, or third time, it's not possible. So what are we saying? You must make somebody to become a governor. And now, if they are saying he made the likes of Fajula, he made the likes of, which person is he going to make? He's just there as a godfather. Somebody is there in Lagos to say, nobody is going to be against me, whatever I say, it's going to be the final say. Then, it's left for you to elect somebody to be in the office, and now, if at the end of the day, the one stupid idiot is coming out to credit you for making such a person, a, a governor, then that person is sick, that's the truth, because what they felt to refer to is that, while you were a governor, they never told us that you are remitting so so amounts to him, because every governor that Tinubu makes has an amount of money. Let me tell you why Sowoli is not functioning, Sowoli is just a dummy, he's unfortunate, he's a governor, but he's a dummy, because he's just there. Balancing Tinubu every month, you need to give something, and now he's not using his brain. Ambody fine, I quite understand, Ambody seems to be disturbing time, if I were Ambody, whatever I did, I wouldn't have done it, I would have done it my second time. So he did not calculate very fine, and that was why Tinubu uses his own power to kick him out of the office. Because I will tell you, that the only thing that worked for Tinubu was he used his own power and kicked Ambody out of the office, that was the only thing that just worked. So Ambody left the office. Now, what I'm trying to say is that, looking at Tinubu's own case, Tinubu when you look at the very problem, Tinubu, look at the age, Tinubu is eighty years. Who's just like my father, eighty years, what is he coming to do in power? There's nothing, you understand? Now, the only person we're talking about is, this person, this Ibo man. Peter O B, I'm an Ibo man, but perhaps, I know very well that Peter O B wants to do something, but I still have something against Peter O B. Because if you claim to be the super innocent that everybody paints you to be, while you are the governor of an umbrella state, what happened? Did you perform any magic? The answer is no, I really don't see these politicians, they are all the same thing. But the reason why I am picking Peter O B is because Peter O B is a little bit better. Shoré is out of it, because we all know that Shoré, Opanso, they are out of it, nobody would definitely, they can't get anywhere, Shoré is out of. Do you want to, Shoré, Shoré a man who, let me not tell you another thing. Unfortunately, if I say to, some people will say, how did you get to know? Yes, Tinubu would have used Shoré, but Shoré has pride. A man who can love, posture for the other, what do you call that? That's pride, so definitely, Tinubu could have, Tinubu could have considered to use Shoré. But Shoré doesn't have respect or regard to his ad, to any adults, so that's why Tinubu felt, okay, fine, let me become my thing myself. I don't want to use any other, but, but, Tinubu is trying, he's trying to speak from experience and the past. He has used so many people that failed, so he knows that this is presidential, and this is a big post, you understand? Then in conclusion, what I'm trying to say is that, I would rather tell Nigerians that, let's try to manage Peter O B, I have a problem with Peter O B. My problem is, he's going to win the selection, no doubt, but I don't see an awesome man giving power to Ibo. That's my problem, I keep saying it every time, anywhere I am, I said this election, Peter O B is win, winning, but I don't see an awesome man confidently handing over power to an Ibo man. It will never be possible, now listen, this is how you get to know. Namdekanu is in the south, the court has granted that they should release him, now Bouharé is still holding on to him because he's an Ibo man. If he's a Yoruba man, he can't try it, that's the truth, he's holding it because he's an Ibo man. And now, listen, sometimes when you say some certain things, the boys of Namdekanu are the eastern descent, they have come out to say no election if Namdekanu don't, don't get released, I support that, their statement. I mean, are you mad? How can you just hold Namdekanu? The court has got, release this man, and you are still holding on him, so definitely, it is because of the fact that Namdekanu is an Ibo man. You cannot tell me that if Namdekanu is a Yoruba man, and the court now say we should release him, and we just still be holding on to him, the answer is no. They can't hold on to you, so let me just round it up this way, Nigerians, please, I want to say this to everybody. This election, I want everybody to vote wisely, and I want to say it, let us try to do our best. If the regular election or anything happens, we know, but I want us to put Peter O B there. I'm not really a great fan of Peter O B, you understand? But the truth is, I think Peter O B is the best choice, so I want to say at this, at this concluding part, please, vote for Peter O B, thank you very much, and God bless.
Thank you so much, M C Grammar, I really appreciate you, and quickly to Rafael, before we leave, the town hall meeting, town hall meeting, town hall meeting. Everywhere, people talking about the absence of Bola Ahmed, Tinubu as the presidential flag bearer of the all progressive congress. Artikoo, no, people are merely talking about Artikoo, but Tinubu, severely, he has, you know, avoided, you know, debates or invites to, to, to program or questioning, why is it so?
Eh, well, you know, what is good for the, for the goose is also good for the gender. Are you listening to me? What is bad for the goose again is as well bad to the, ba, bad for the gender. Sure understand, so, when Tinubu skipped last weekend, eh, you know, eh, presidential debates, people know it will be like that, ask me why? Because Tinubu himself, he have health issues. Sure understand, in the sense that, each and every question throws at him or to him. He always talks different thing, yes, he would talk out of point, he would drift from the actual question asking, and then start discussing another thing. That one is apart, then, Artikoo himself, Artikoo is not a white, a sacred cow. I don't know what I understand, Artikoo's own case is as well like Tinubu's, Tinubu is a human being, Artikoo is a human being. Why should Artikoo skip presidential debate? Why? Why should he? If you look at both of them, if you ask me, they are better, same feather, that's why they are avoiding presidential debates. Artikoo will have no reason to miss presidential debate, because that's, would be used as a platform for him to voice out to the people his manifesto and plans for Nigeria. But you see what happened over the weekend? There are people that believe that they are above the law. In Nigeria, there are people that, the law, the long arms of the law, stretch arms of the law, doesn't catch upwards. Tinubu is one of them, Artikoo is one of them, Bouharé is an elephant, when you talk about law. Bouharé is an elephant, and Nigerian law is like a sesame fly or housefly. So law has nothing to do with these people, they believe that they can do anything, all manner of things, you know, they like, all manners of thing that, that they like. Look, you skip presidential debates, and nobody question you, and you did it so that you knew that nobody could question you. So when you get to the, to the seat of authority of this country, you will just look at us as rats, grasses. You can do anything and get out of it, the law, which is the department of judiciary, can never question you of any misdeeds or doings. Are you listening to me? So now, it has already been showing, it is playing out. They don't want to come for presidential debates, in twenty nineteen, they didn't come. It was Oshibanjio, Yemi Oshibanjio that went to, eh, you know, debate with O B. O B himself, a second man to Artikoo, Artikoo skipped it in nineteen nineteen, and twenty nineteen, eh, Bouharé skipped it as well. They all, you know, eh, 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 sent their flag bearers, their, what do, what do you call them? Their, their.
Their vice.
Their vice, sure understand, their deputies was the one that represented them. And if you ask me, that has shown the level of incompetence in this current regime. Because Bouharé has never, when they faced the whole world and said, I am this, I should do this for Nigeria, this is who I am, no. He doesn't express himself well, he doesn't speak good English, in fact, his appearance, if ask me on CNN or even Nigerian national daily newspapers, people will use that to love him, but you see Tinubu and Artikoo, they are dead on arrival. It has indicated the kind of lack of nice attitude they are going to expect if given the opportunity to be there. And I'm telling you that, we in Nigeria today, I mean southern Nigeria, we are much, much exposed and advanced. It's not going to be like before anymore, if you ask me, Tinubu is not only for the Yorubas, it's for the ibos.
So what, what will be the future implication?
The future implications of the, of this is that, if they will, we are going to face more harder, harder time than before. If the opportunity is given to Artikoo and Tinubu, we are going to march into the Atlantic Ocean. Some of us, we evacuate the mainland of Nigeria and start dwelling on top of water, because since security will be everywhere, incompetence and incompetence on handling the economy of this country, will lead you and I to incessant hunger, excruciating hunger, famine, there will be famine in the land. These are people that don't know about economy, these are people that don't know about, eh, eh, security, how to secure the, these are people that don't know how to diversify. Diversification, management of human beings, ethnicities, nat, natural resources we have in this country, you must know how to diversify. Flanneman, Yoruba man, Ibo man, Afik man, Urobo man, a German, they are human being, it shouldn't be only your own tribe. That's what I mean by diva, diversification, you should know how to handle Yoruba, you should know how to handle Ibo, handle Flanneman, handle Lausa, Ibibio, Afik, Urobo, Abrak, everybody, we are all humans. That is what I mean by divis, diversification, when you only don't know how to debate, presidential debate, you don't know anything. You are telling the people, I am incompetent, I can't do it, you are dodging something.
Just like when you said, talk is cheap, the action matters.
Thank you, action matters a lot.
So, I, I, I think he supported Tinubu's absence.
Eh, absence, eh, who is that, who said that? Kule, let me tell you, Kule you see, is my colleague, we review, we go to many, we've been to many journalists, you know, hangout platform, media platform and forum, Kule you say is a doggy ethnic by God, he's a dogged man, he can talk anything. He supports Tinubu now, of course, he has been fighting everybody. I tell him that if O B is incompetent, I will never support O B, if O B is an incompetent man, I will never. Are you listening to me? If Tinubu is competent to rule this country, I will support Tinubu, Tinubu is not competent, age is not on his side. If Artikoo is the right person, I will support Artikoo, without minding from which tribe or race, but let me tell you, age is not on Artikoo's side. Artikoo has mishandled public funding in Nigeria over and over, many years ago, Artikoo was there in nineteen ninety-two, he contested under Aina Rusi, I think, H S N P or another political party. Artikoo was with Obasanjo in nineteen ninety-nine, the one election, Artikoo started stealing and looting all government establishment, public establishment in the country.
Age is not on Tinubu's side or Artikoo's side, don't forget that the person ruling America is an old man.
Thank you, he's an old, he's an old man, but when you look at American medical facilities, an old man will be, you know, return to a man of four years of age. Yeah, eh, Joe, Joe Biden age doesn't matter, because, you know, the man of less than ninety years old in America, with medical facilities over their medication, could start reasoning, reasoning tomorrow like a child of four years old. Yes, because of what they have over there, the kind of food they eat, the kind of medication they give them, the kind of social life they live, the kind of society they have there, the kind of system they run in America is not the same system we run here. So an old man in America, thinking for us is just number, because their inside is quite different from our inside.
It doesn't affect your leadership quality.
At all, no, 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 Joe Biden is trying, if he, if he give me hundred Joe Biden and give me ten million Bouharé, I will throw ten million Bouharé all the way to Pacific Ocean to go and drown there. I will accept Joe Biden, because American society is better than us, Tinubu, Bouharé has rubbish Nigeria the way nobody has ever done in history. And the providence, posterity and history shall follow him for what? Judgment.
Alright, thank you so much, Rafael, and on this note, we say goodbye to you on today's edition of this program, join us next time on the same platform, Michael Adebayo remains, my name behind the camera, my video grappa, Hola Evito. Thank you so much, join us next time on the same platform, bye.